Thank you all for being here. So I want to open up the subcommittee meeting of the Health and Human Services Committee of the City Council. It is one o'clock and here today, we're going to be talking about the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, specifically the water issues that we've been having for the last, I would say, two or three years. I first want to commend the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission for, you know, all the good work they do. I know that at every event that I've been to, that the city's been involved in, or even public events, the Water Commission has been there, providing water to our residents and to our constituents. So I want to thank you for that. So we're just going to get into it. And I actually am going to ask Counselor Allen if you would just give a history of what, how we got to be here today? And then we could just take it from there. We've got just a few questions that we want to ask, and we're certainly going to be stopping by two o'clock, if not before then. Counselor Allen, please.
Yeah, sure. Madam Chair. This really is about fundamentally the letter that we've been getting off and on for the last three or four years about the particulate matter or the contamination of the water. I don't know if those are the right words to use, but the first letter, I'm not sure when it came, maybe four years ago or so. Basically, it expressed concerns about, and by the way, do we have Helen Colton Harris here?
I don't see her.
Okay, I'll have them call and make sure.
She's not, she just called for the link.
She just called for the link, they said.
Okay, so she may be coming on.
Yeah, so we're outside the council office, Tom Shea and I. So that's why they heard me say that and they just confirmed that. So during that four-year period, give or take, I've been involved with Tom Shea, sitting next to me, who was a resident of Long Meadow, but owns property in Springfield. He and I had taken an interest in this issue off and on over the years, and the letter continues to come intermittently. So I'm not sure, I've talked, obviously I've met with Josh, met with Josh in June out at West Parish Filters, Caterie Walsh and I went out there. And many people, some of whom were going to come to this meeting but couldn't because of the time, are concerned about the health of the water long-term and what the mitigation factor is, you know, how, how, I know there's a new plant that's going to be built, that's going to solve the problem. You know, one other option, people, I know that's a solution coming from your side. If the new plant will supposedly take care of the fact that the problem we've been having, but also we just need to have an open discussion about the role that the city of Springfield has in the decision-making you do, this is my own opinion. You know, as a major client, any decisions that are made that have something to do with that, I think we should be aware of ahead of time. And also what residents can do, filter, you know, people are asking us about rid of filters and this and that, buying bottled water, and it's becoming, I don't want to overstate it, but I don't want to understate it either. There are three people, Tom being one of them, who are in my ear constantly about this. The other two people couldn't come, couldn't make it today at this time. And other people are just saying, you know, the most fundamental thing a city does is provide water. And we just need to have a good airing out of, you know, how healthy the water is, what we can do about it, and what the recommendations are from you guys. So when I got going again on this in June, after the rate hike came out in May or something, I put out to the City Council, taking a trip out to West Parish Filters. As it turned out, it was just Caterie and I that went. And then over the process of the last two or three months, just decided to, you know, I reached out to Zaida, because she's Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, and to Helen Colton Harris, who's our Public Health Commissioner for the city, to maybe, to have a meeting like this, so that it becomes more public and the remediation approaches, et cetera, are clear to everybody. So that's the background. And Zaida and I and Helen met last week in here, just the three of us, to kind of go through the issues, and here we are.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. So from that, so from that brief history, Commissioner Colton Harris, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I am, I think we framed some very important questions that we wanted to ask, and I know that you are going to provide the leadership on those questions, and so I'm comfortable with your doing that. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Commissioner. So from the history, the commission and the employees at the Water Commission have heard a few questions. So I think the first question, and the one that I think the residents are more concerned about, are the contamination, the letters that we've been getting. The letters tell us basically that, you know, there are contaminants, that it's safe to drink, unless of course you're pregnant, or unless of course you've been drinking it for a long period of time. And to me, the long period of time is concerning, because how long have we been doing this? I know that at one time in our history, in the city of Springfield, we had the best water in the country at one point. And I would brag about it, and it was great, and people loved it, it tasted good. And I'm not sure what happened between when and when that that changed. I still think the water is okay to drink, it tastes good, but receiving those letters gives us concern. So like Counselor Allen said, is there anything that the residents can do to mitigate the problems? And is it okay for us to be drinking the water? What is a long period of time? I know those are a lot of questions. Who wants to take, try to answer some of those? Of the commission or employees?
Counselor, I can certainly start, but I'm going to defer to either Chairman Otero or Commissioner Rodriguez. If they, if they have anything they want to state, and certainly you can take the lead on anything you want, otherwise you know I'll go on and on.
Yeah, I will. There's the science behind it that I, that I'm going to defer to Josh for. But I mean, I guess the short answer is, when you ask what happened, what happened is climate change. And what will continue to happen is climate change. And so the processing, you couple that with antiquated infrastructure, and it becomes incredibly difficult, more and more incredibly difficult to, to get the water, to test water and make sure that it tests the way that it's supposed to. Now, Josh is going to explain that in more detail. But I think that one of the things that we should all keep in mind during this conversation is that there are forces much greater beyond this conversation, the Water and Sewer Committee, the Springfield City Council, and even the mayor's office that is at play here, right? And we're just catching up with the technology. Because the investment that we're doing on infrastructure is, hasn't been seen in Springfield for a very long time.
Yeah, and I would just, I would just add to that, that the first and foremost, and I know I can speak for the other two commissioners, we take the health and safety of the water supply and sewer treatment, the health and safety of the effects of that as the number one priority. And all the decisions that we make, excuse me. And as Chairman Otero has said, things have been changing over time, and we do have a very old system that's not able to keep up to date with today's testing and standards, which has also been changing. We have had conversations many times about, well, what can we do so that we don't have to issue these notices, because we know that the notices will erode confidence in our great water supply. And it's still the great water supply that that we have had. As the councilwoman had mentioned, it's still the same water. The, the issue is that we have a, you know, an outdated system and, and changing regulations that are forcing us to, to make changes and do things that we didn't, either didn't know how to do in the past, or didn't have the capability to do in the past. And that we could very easily stop these notices by not adding chlorine and have different problems. The, this problem or this solution is the best solution that we can come up with today, with today's technology. But it is paramount in our, our thought process and decision-making. All the water and sewer activities as commissioners, we aren't the scientists, as Chairwoman Otero said, we are also not the experts. But in the end, the decisions get brought to us for approval. And we set that direction, and you know, water quality, water safety is the first thing that drives us as commissioners that are appointed by the mayor to represent the city.
Thank you. So that statement, I guess, leads me to another question. And I know we're going to have a lot of questions today. We may have to schedule another meeting to continue this conversation, but exactly, I know, I heard Chairwoman Otero say that, you know, climate change is part of the issue, infrastructure, you know, processing, we need to, you know, catch up with the technology. So what exactly is it that we are being exposed to as residents who are using, drinking that water?
Okay, thanks, Counselor. Thanks, Commissioners. I'll, I'll jump in and try to unpack that in, just taking some notes, a little bit about the order of what we're asking. So just to, to be clear, the water is absolutely safe to drink. And the notices that you've been receiving for four years are required through Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And some of the language in those notices, the language that alarms people the most is required language. We don't have a choice but to include that. And so I think that we've had many discussions with EPA and DEP about that language, as others have across the Commonwealth, that similarly are, are experiencing the same changes in the raw water quality due to the, the changes in climate that Commissioner Otero referred to, essentially more rain, short duration, high intensity rain events are washing more organics into all surface water bodies. Springfield is not alone in this. There has been an increase in disinfection byproduct compliance issues across the Commonwealth. So is the water drinkable? It's absolutely drinkable. When you look about the regulations that you're receiving these notices for, really started in 2012, were, were the latest updates to those. So when you think back, counselors, to when, when, you know, in your minds, Springfield water was great, we still believe it is. What has changed? Well, our infrastructure has gotten older, and new regulations and new science has been developed that allows us to look more closely at all sorts of effects. But the key takeaway to all of this, and, and it, it's public information, and it's commonly understood by water professionals and scientists, is when you weigh in the balance of using chlorine as disinfection versus the potential ill effects of disinfection byproducts, everybody is still using chlorine to disinfect their water. It is considered to be one of the most important public health discoveries in, in civilization, is the disinfection of water and, and the elimination of waterborne disease. So, you know, when, when, those are the big broad statements, but it is the truth. The fact that we're disinfecting the water with chlorine does have some downside to it, but the upside of that is far more important. And I, and I think Commissioner Otero referred to that. So the water is safe to drink, the exposure that we're talking about is over a lifetime or decades. And so what we have really seen in the past four years is more organics coming into our raw water quality into the reservoir, being washed in by some of these extreme rain events. And our treatment plant was not designed to remove this type of material, because when our treatment plants were designed and built, there was no concern about disinfection byproducts. They didn't exist at that time, and now they do. And so what we have done is optimize treatment at the treatment plant to the extent that we can, and not just at the treatment plant, but out into the distribution system. So there's a variety of things that the commission has done over the past four years to limit the formation of disinfection byproducts and to the extent that we can lower them at the tap for consumers. And we continuously look at that daily on adjusting our treatment and what we're doing in maintenance in the system, including flushing, et cetera. So I think we've been very aggressive. The reality for us is that our treatment plants, we have two of them at West Parish Filters, one of them about a hundred, a hundred and ten years old, and the other one coming up on sixty years old, does not have the technology to remove disinfection byproducts or to remove the organics that create disinfection byproducts. And so we've weighed many, many different options and engineering studies, and have had world experts in consultation with us, and a, and a team of experts to kind of help guide us through making decisions. And we arrived at building a new treatment plant for a variety of reasons. And building a new treatment plant is not something that happens overnight. These are massive public works, projects that take absolute, you can't misstep in this process, but not only that, you're building, you're building infrastructure that has to last the next fifty years. And with the rate of change of technology and environment, you have to look at many, many different scenarios and kind of, and kind of look into your crystal ball. We're building something now that has to last for fifty years. How are we going to make sure that we can adjust as needed, expand as needed, provide a footprint to deal with the next round of unknowns, because we know that they are out there? And so
Josh?
Sure.
I'm, I'm sorry, if I could just please stop you right there, because I do want to talk about the, the new water plant. But just to answer the question that I asked, what are we being exposed to? So what it sounds like you said is basically chlorine and the, the byproducts of the disinfected that you're doing to the water, is that correct?
Yeah, and, and Counselor, that's, in, in the notices that you get, it talks about HAA5 haloacetic acids and tri-halo-methanes. And those are both byproducts of naturally occurring organic material in the water, from the watershed, decomposed leaf matter, things from the forest washing into the reservoir. And then as they go through filtration and treatment, they mix with the chlorine, and they create something called disinfection byproducts.
Okay, so one, one follow-up question to that is, so having said that and having maybe explained that letter in more simple terms, is there anything that the residents can do to mitigate any, you know, negative effects from that at this point?
Yeah, they don't need to do anything. I mean, that is the fact, that the water is safe to drink. And I think the, some of the language in the notices speaks to if you're pregnant, nursing, or or, or otherwise compromised immune system, that you may, not that you have to, you may want to consider talking to your physician. And unfortunately, I think we, we hear this a lot, is that people call their physicians and their physicians don't know anything about disinfection byproducts. I, I, I'll say this, that the, there's not definitive facts of if you drink this much for this long, you will get something, you know, you're going to get something. That's not how it is. There, there, there's not clear data that shows, there's not definitive data, otherwise you would have a hard and fast, you can't drink the water, which is not the case. And so they, they are in an abundance of caution, creating a regulation that sets an upper limit that says you don't have to stop drinking the water, but something should be done about this if it continues. And, and it continued for us for a period of time where we feel like, you know, we're, 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 we're not grossly exceeding the limits, counselors. We're right at the limits of sometimes, sometimes we're in compliance with some samples and out of compliance with others. And that's just another, another nuance to all of this. We are close to being in compliance, but we are not. And you can expect us to continue that trend, and as we have said that.
Josh, I think also, and not to get into the specifics of the way sampling and calculations are done, but what happens is because the, the, the results have to be averaged over time, the result, if you have one that's out of spec, that'll, that out of spec or slightly high re-reading will carry on for several months, even though the subsequent months may be in spec because of the way we have to report the numbers. So the letters come out, and it sounds like every day of every month, we have a health concern the way it's written.
Right, right. And, and I understand that.
And it's system-wide. And it, the reality is, we're sampling around the system, we have to aggregate all the samples. And then the number, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, as I understand it, you know, the numbers get averaged in and they, and they carry on, you have like a rolling average that carries on. And so you could have a situation where there's no, nothing out of spec today, but the report still says it is because of the way the numbers are averaged.
So Commissioner, and thank you for that.
Could you identify yourself, please? Whoever just spoke, could you just please identify yourself?
That was Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you.
So thank you for that. So, so again, what I'm hearing is, right, that we don't know if it's going to affect you in ten years, twenty years, decades is two decades, right? Or thirty years, we don't know. So right now, what it sounds like is that there's nothing really that the residents can do to mitigate that, besides just not drink the water or boil it, or, you know, whatever it is that can be done. So that's one. Commissioner Harris, Colton Harrison, Counselor Allen, or is there anything that I missed regarding that part?
I think you, when we met, you asked the question about longitudinal. And so what that is, Josh, we've heard a couple of numbers from you. Two thousand and four, and then I think I heard two thousand and twelve. And I just wonder, I think one of the questions that came up was, we've been dealing with this since two thousand and four potentially, which would give us almost nine years. And has there been a cumulative health effect in those nine years that the residents should be concerned about? If I recall, Counselor Govan, that was one of the questions that, that was asked or was framed.
Absolutely, yeah. And that's, that's where, you know, I know the letter says that, you know, if you drink it over a long period of time. So I'm thinking, okay, so you're saying it's decades. If this has been going on since two thousand and four, then it's been almost two decades that we've been in this situation. And I'm hearing there's really nothing that the residents can do to mitigate that at this point. I'm looking forward to building the new plant. It's going to be expensive, we heard, because I was at the, at the, I guess, the, the announcement of the new plant, it looks beautiful and, and great. But from that, I heard that we were going to have it built by twenty twenty-five, I think. And then now, I think the day has been pushed back. So the day being pushed back, of course, is a concern, because now we're going maybe into three decades. And are, are there any studies being done of watching people and seeing like on Commissioner Colin Harris said about the, the side effects of having been drinking this water for this long?
Counselor, if I may, I don't think I said anything about two thousand and four. And I, what I said was that the regulations for these were revised in two thousand and tw- in two thousand and twelve. But we've only had non-compliance for the past four years. So in two thousand and four and two thousand and eight, it was not an issue. So I think people have been exposed at moderate levels, but levels that exceed what the regulations say that require public notification for the past four years, on and off, because we've had some compliance. So in that regard, again, boiling the water's not going to help this situation, filters aren't going to help this situation. The water is safe to drink. EPA and DEP absolutely agree with that. Their statement says right up front, the water is safe to drink. And, and so, and, and from our perspective, you're not going to be exposed to this for decades, meaning twenty years or more, or a lifetime, because by two thousand and eight, we're going to have a treatment plant built and taking care of business. Two thousand, two thousand and twenty-eight.
I thought we were going back.
I'm going back in time. Well, if I could, so.
I wish.
And, and either case, so, you know, as unsettling as that may be as a customer to say we're getting these notices, just, you know, I think we've been extremely transparent. We've come to every meeting, we go to Citizens Council meetings, we openly talk about this and answer any questions that people have. And we answer every question that people have, and the staff have been pretty dedicated to that. But the, the fact of the matter is that this is something that may cause health effects if you consume water over decades or a lifetime. It's not a fact that you will get health effects by consuming the water. And the nuances of those language are hard for customers to understand. But that's the required language, and, and we're really not, we can't change that. And so when we talk to people, when we put out our press releases, when we have public meetings or Citizens Council meetings, we try to, we try to, in layman's terms, explain what the issues are to the extent that we can and say, you, you don't have to worry about this. You're not drinking this water for decades or a lifetime. And, you know, not everybody believes that. And that's a struggle as a water provider, when people start losing trust. And we do everything we can, and we continue to be open to any number of ideas, and we continue to look at internally ideas on how to communicate and communicate better to our customers that the water is safe to drink. And so that's our biggest challenge, that and financing the water treatment plant. So just touching on one of your questions about how come at one point in time we were told it was, it would be complete in twenty twenty-five, and now it's twenty twenty-eight? So the decision to build a new water treatment plant, moving forward, we had been studying a, a number of issues since twenty fifteen. In twenty eighteen, on or thereabout, we began the process of trying to find the federal funding to build a new treatment plant. And at that point in time, it was a concept with some studies, and we had found the funding to do the work, and we hadn't done any hard design work. And so that's twenty eighteen. We, we get the, we get the funding, we move into COVID, we advance our design, and as we advanced the, the design of the treatment plant, it became very obvious that modifying the existing treatment plant, which is kind of what the initial plan was, was not going to be able to be done. It was not feasible, it wouldn't serve us well, and it was not a cost-effective measure, and that we needed to build a new treatment plant in order to have it work for the next fifty years. And so that's where we moved from, and, and this is not an uncommon, not an uncommon theme in public works, and especially in, in the water sector, in water and wastewater. You start thinking you're going to do one thing, you do your homework, you do your due diligence, you look to the future, you look at all of the information that you have, and sometimes what you thought was a project shifts to something else, and, and that's pretty commonplace. And in this particular case, you know, these are decisions that the commission, that the Water and Sewer Commission are making for the next fifty years. And so making a misstep when you're talking hundreds of millions of dollars is, is a, is a no-no. You know, we take very seriously the cost of the service that we provide and the affordability, and we certainly can speak to that in a different meeting, but staying focused on this. So that's how we went from, you know, what was at the time, I think, a hundred and sixty-seven million dollar project to be completed in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six to a three hundred-plus million dollar project that is going out to twenty twenty-eight. And I, I will add that once we knew we were building a new treatment plant, the, the concept was at thirty percent design that we would be complete in December of twenty twenty-seven. We're now in July, we're looking at July of twenty twenty-eight, so a six-month scheduled pushout. And that includes everything that has happened during COVID. So when you think about the work that we have done, which is we went from concept to this month, we'll be receiving the draft ninety percent plans, and we'll be bidding this come January and February, and opening bids in, in June, I believe. We, we did not lay off the pedal through COVID. We, we are full steam ahead. We don't even have a funding source for the increase that we have experienced, and, and we're working on that. And so what I can tell you is, we know first and foremost, that the trust in your water is core to everything. It's core to public health, it's core to the economy, it's core to, it's core to people's, their lives, right? So, and their livelihoods. And so we have not let up, we have pushed and pushed and pushed. So when I look at the fact that having a concept in twenty eighteen, the ninety percent plans in, in twenty twenty-three, moving into construction in twenty twenty-four. twenty twenty-three, moving into construction in twenty twenty-four, um, I don't think we've missed a beat. Um, all things considered, uh, you know, with two years of pandemic in the middle of that, um, I think the, the staff and the folks that we've been working with have done a pretty good job of keeping this moving when, when there were a lot of obstacles. So.
Well, the other, the other thing, if I may, uh, Josh, is the, um, you know, uh, the procurement of goods and services hasn't been easy in the last few years either. And so, and that you layer on inflation, and all of a sudden, what was supposed to cost something costs twice as much, if not three times. So in spite of, to just sort of, you know, highlight, uh, Josh's point, in spite of a pandemic, inflation, um, uh, procurement issues in terms of goods and services, uh, our schedule is still pretty tight. Um, and so the commitment is strong, and, um, if we could do it sooner, we would.
Um, Josh, could I ask you to go over the timeline again? I just, I, I may have it wrong. So just in terms of the timeline, um, from, uh, the, when the, you said four years ago was when, uh, the, uh, notices began to go out. Is that correct?
Yeah, um, that's correct, Commissioner.
So, um, four years ago, I have a two thousand four, uh, date down here. Did something happen in two thousand four? Is that a date that was given to me that has no relevance at all?
Uh, I, I, I don't, it's not a date I threw out there.
Okay.
So I'm not sure where it came from.
Josh, Josh, I think you said that in two thousand four is when the EPA guidelines changed or something like that?
Two thousand and twelve, uh, was the, um, change. And I, I see Sue is on here. Sue, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think two thousand and twelve is when, uh, the new DVP, um, regulations.
Yeah, so we, we were in stage one prior to two thousand and twelve, where you could average your entire system. And then in two thousand and twelve, uh, you could no longer do that. Uh, and that's when it became a tougher regulation for us to meet. And we, but we managed to meet it for six or seven years, um, with no major storms. That threw us off.
Thanks, thanks, Sue. And a- a- and again, I think what, what we are experiencing and what we certainly experienced last week with the storm and over the past couple of years is, uh, more and more severe storms. And those are impacting the watershed. And the watershed really is the protection of our drinking water, right? And so uh, as you have these big storms washing more debris into the reservoir, that's the organic matter. Um, and we manage our, our watershed well, but, uh, we just don't have a treatment plant that has the technology to remove what is being washed in there right now. And so um, that's where, that's where we are. You're just seeing an increase. And again, um, I, I think the important thing here is the, the, the immediate risk of not utilizing chlorine is far more, i- it's a much higher consequence than the potential for exposure to chemicals that may, over a lifetime, cause, um, some medical issues. I mean, that is.
Could you say what those potential risks are, Josh, so that we're clear um, on the risk currently using chlorine and what the risks might be if we were not using, um, using chlor- disinfecting the water. Um, and the, the difference between disinfecting byproducts and what we might experience were we not using chlorine as our, um, disinfecting product?
Sure. Good, good question, Commissioner. Uh, well, if we weren't using chlorine, you would be having boil water orders on a regular basis because the water wouldn't be safe from bacteria and viruses. And that's what chlorine does. It kills bacteria and viruses and allow, allows us, um, to have safe and clean water. So without, without chlorine and without chlorine residual, uh, in the system, um, you are at risk of bacteriological outbreaks, which includes, you know, cholera, uh, amongst other, uh, you know, gut disease, et cetera, and long-term other issues associated uh, with bacteria and viruses, um, that have historically been, um, eliminated in modern civilization since the disinfection and treatment of water has come online. The flip side of that is I don't have our last, um, and, and maybe one of the staff can pull it up, uh, and share it or just read it. Um, I don't have our last notice in front of me where it speaks to the direct, um, potential. Jamie, any chance you could get that?
I do have the fact sheet from Mass DEP about this.
Okay.
In front of me. So, um, HAA fiber possibly carcinogenic to humans based on evidence of carcinogen- ethnicity, if I said that right, in laboratory animals and limited evidence in people. Um, these, uh, include effects on the liver, kidneys and reproductive system and on development. The significance of these events is uh, affects is not uncertain, is uncertain, as some studies have reported similar effects while others have not. That's just a snapshot of it.
Thank you, Jamie. Commissioner? Anything else on that?
No, I just think that, I, I'm wondering, as we talk about, uh, for our residents, when they're reading these notices, if there's a way of incorporating into, number one, um, that they have some foundational understanding because when we look at it, the language is not clear, um, where a layperson can interpret it. But I'm wondering if it's of value to put out a fact sheet that explains, um, chlorine, um, versus not, uh, chlorine, the, the disinfectant byproducts versus what the potential might be, uh, if we were not disinfecting. That's just, uh, I think that would help, um, the residents. And then to say the water is safe on top of that, I think might be a message that residents can digest a little bit more readily. But that's just, um, based on the feedback that I've heard. I think the risk versus value statement is one that might be helpful.
Sure. And I think we have messaged that, uh, to some degree, and we can re-message that. I think sometimes that message gets lost. And I, I also think if you look at the, there's usually a difference between our required public notice and what our press release is, because we try to, um, boil it down in our press release, so it's more consumable by our customers. But the, the language in the public notice itself, although it may seem alarmist, that is actual regulatory requirement. Just so, so we're clear. So usually, usually we, um, put out, um, of the pub, the required public notice. And then we do our own press release, which is nuanced a little differently, so we can try to explain it to the layperson a little more easily. Um, and I, I will add, um, although I think they've taken it down in the reference materials in previous public notices, uh, Mass DEP's own website referred to a Mass Department of Public Health, um, memorandum that spoke to the fact that, um, the risk of, um, DBPs affecting your health versus the risk of not chlorinating your water is substantial. And that chlorinating your water, um, is more important than dealing directly. You, you wouldn't, you wouldn't stop chlorinating your water because of disinfection byproducts. Um, and, and so I think that has since, um, been removed, but, um, we can address that again in some of our outreach, uh, the importance of chlorination, um, as well. And I, and I think, um, we've also had some experts, um, at UMass involved in this as well. And they certainly have been, uh, interviewed regarding this and, and speak to that as well. I think, um, uh, that, that, I, I'm trying to remember when that was, but a, a few years ago, um, there were a couple of interviews that were televised, uh, with the folks from UMass.
I think it's a great idea to think about when you do send out a notice, maybe having a fact sheet in addition to it using layman's terms, right? Because when we look at that, I don't understand it myself. And I have a master's degree in not science, of course, but, you know, I look at it and I said, all I see is danger. So I think having a fact sheet comparing, um, you know, the report and what it really means, um, in layman's terms. Um, but at this time, I think I wa- I do want to give our resident, he, um, took the time to be here. He's one of our constituents, and I just want to give him an, the opportunity to ask any questions. Um, Tom, do you have any, um, a question you would like to ask Mr. Shea?
Sure. Thank you, Counselor. Um, I guess first I'd say I am comfortable with the water. I'm a longtime, uh, customer, and, uh, this is not what's gonna impact my health. There's a few other things that are ahead of it. Um, you know, this is not a Flint, Michigan, or a Bayonne, New Jersey situation. So I, I, I think the current status, if you will, is, for me, and I think others, is okay. I do agree with, uh, Commissioner Harris, that, and Josh, it sounded like you would look into this. Education is very important. You know, people see this. They worry about their elderly parents, their children. So I, I think that's very important. Um, I guess the next piece I would ask is, if I've got my dates right, you know, we're talking about twenty fifteen, then twenty eighteen. Um, we're now into twenty twenty-three, and I think there was mentioned it. You're pretty close to ninety percent design, but I guess I'm very familiar with the Sydney, Australia desalinization plant. I can't tell you how long it took to design. It's reverse osmosis, which may or may, may not be used here. But that took three years to build. And ten years ago, it was two billion dollars. It was a public-private partnership, so it wasn't all public. So I guess my next, the, the question I'm leading into is, you're close to going out to bid. Number one, I hope it would be a fixed-price turnkey so that the citizens and customers are not um, on the hook for increases, that it's truly fixed price, not engineer as you're going along. And then the second part is, is there any possible way that this can be done sooner than, you know, the four to five years? Like I said, two billion dollar project ten years ago in Sydney was done in three years. Can you do that somehow? Get it done quicker, either? Um, you know, either use off-the-shelf, um, you know, compressors, whatever, or is there any way? Because it just seems, it's, you, you don't wanna have this problem for four more years, neither does anyone else. And I guess the other thing I would say is I think these notices fall and winter, maybe even don't go out because there's not the torrential rains. So I mean, it's it's kind of a maybe two to three times a year, but basically, you know, I guess we're at the ninety percent. It took quite a while for design. I guess somebody mentioned procurement and inflation. Well, it's gonna be whatever it is, um, when you go out to bid. So I mean, that's not really a factor here.
No, sir. Actually, it is. It is a factor because, uh, we don't get any funding, um, from the state uh, or our city or even the federal government. And so all of that does impact not only the time, but the cost of this. So, you know, if we were a public utility that, that received grants, then, then we wouldn't have to worry about that. But the idea that inflation and that the, um, the procurement issue is not a real thing and doesn't affect costs and time, it's just not true.
It, it does impact costs. I didn't deny that. It doesn't necessarily.
It wasn't a, it wasn't a factor.
Whatever it's, whatever it's gonna cost will be in the rates at the end of the day. So whatever it costs, when you go out to cut, to bid.
So then, then.
That's what it costs.
Then how do we, I think, time if we can't determine?
Well, I think the question is, when is it going to start? And I think Mr. Shea asked if, would it be possible to have it completed sooner rather than later? Because originally, the initial, um, press conference that we had a, a while ago was twenty twenty-five. And now we're into twenty twenty-eight. So when is it gonna start? You know, I know, I realize it's going to cost money. Um, if it was a public utility like it was, I don't know when it was, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, then it'd be a different story regarding finances. But you know, as it is now, it's a private company, so now you have to raise the money or make the money or however. Um, and I think I also heard Mr. Shea say that we don't really wanna see the cost passed on to our consumers, right? Um, with the problems that we've been having. Consumers also are experiencing inflation. Um, they went through a pandemic. Everything is going up.
Yeah.
Um, and we just, we just, I think, in this case, I also wanna know, when is it going to start? When, when is the project going to, you know, break, break ground?
And if there's any way to speed up completion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer a couple of those. But, uh, first off, just so we're clear, we are not a private entity. We are absolutely a public entity serving the region. We're a public regional water and sewer commission, serving the region.
So you qualify for grants and, and programs?
We qualify for grants that, uh, would be available, but there are no available quote-unquote grants in the water sector, um, that are substantial enough and meaningful enough. We don't get state aid, much like a, a city's budget, um, for, for Springfield is at least fifty percent of the budget comes from state aid. We're not eligible for state aid, but we are fully public agency. Um, just so we're clear, but let, let's talk about a couple of things. Um, the, a- as I stated before, we will be, uh, bidding this project this winter, and then we will be awarding, uh, in late spring and starting construction in the summer of twenty twenty-four. So, um, we're, we're on the cusp of that. Um, and again, I, I will absolutely agree with Commissioner Otero to, to think that the effects of the pandemic and subsequent issues with supply chain, labor, qualified contractors, um, that may play out, um, that's yet to be determined how that will play out. But I know for a fact that we still cannot get basic materials for the work that we do in the water sector. So absolutely will impact cost and will impact schedule. We've, we've accounted for that in the best way that we can, and what we've done for uh, estimating and what our engineers have done for estimated, uh, for estimating all along the way, thirty, sixty, and now ninety percents here in the next month or two. So we'll, we'll continue to do that, and our engineers account for that to the extent that they can, because the bidding market in, in public works and water sector is still very volatile. So that will speak to that. In terms of.
Josh, can I just interrupt you for a second as well?
Sure.
Um, also, um, it, we tend to, uh, when we have these discussions, we tend to, uh, forget to um, uh, rewind back to the initial position. I know that from the, the commissioners on down, we're constantly putting pressure on to see if we can get this done faster, sooner, as soon as possible. Because every one of these letters that goes out is one too many. And so every time we review the, the project, the question is, great, let's get it done faster. And, and we're constantly putting pressure on, whether it's on the contract engineers or the staff, to get this done faster. Um, within the constraints of the economy and within con- the constraints of the design. However, faster should not be poor quality. And, and that's the, the balance that we we try to make sure we focus the, the, the staff on. We wanna do it right. This water plant is gonna be in service for fifty years plus. And we don't wanna have fifty years plus of Band-Aids.
Okay, so.
All right, Josh.
Yep.
Beginning construction twenty twenty-four, summer twenty twenty-four.
Correct. We'll, we'll have awarded the contract and, uh, contractors will be mobilizing and constructing. And then a- as far as accelerating construction, um, we've accelerated everything that can be accelerated. So, uh, you know, uh, um, uh, Mr. Shea, I'm not familiar with, uh, whatever you're familiar with, uh, in Sydney a- and how they do things, but, um, the way that.
That, that being said, we're constantly looking for new ways to accelerate. If we can find a way to shorten the cycle, we will. Right, Josh?
So it's gonna take four years to construct, um, the plant? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
I see. Okay. So, and then we go back to cost. We know it's gonna cost a lot of money. Um, how is that going to be passed on to the consumers?
It's going to be passed on to the customers. And I think the, uh, at the end of the day, um, we're accounting for that in what we've given for rates in the previous year and what we have, um, provided for projection of rates, uh, barring any upsets in a variety of different things. And so, you know, obviously, the commission's financial team is. And so, you know, obviously, the commission's financial team is extremely um sensitive. To um rate sensitivity, to affordability and um what it costs to build this plant. So we continue to look for ways to lower the impact on the rates. And and we've done a pretty good job of uh turning the stone over to find where we can get loans. Because there are very few grants available to us, but we've gotten some uh fairly favorable loans through a different, a couple of different varieties of loans. From state and federal agencies and we're continuing to work on that, so.
I think I think actually Josh is underselling that a little bit. There's been significant amount of money that we've been able to get with very, very low interest or no interest loans. We're getting, we were the first water utility in the country to get the Wiffy alone, and that was massive. Um, and it's, you know, there are other grants that you can out get out there for ten thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars. But we're going after the the tens of million dollar type grants and loans. And every time there's an opportunity to get loan forgiveness, uh the the staff is is after that. And we have gotten that. Um, and that's how we're managing the price impact to to the residents. In such a way that it's, you know, it it it's, it it'll be consumable, if you will.
So just those ten thousand dollar uh grants and fifty thousand dollar grants, they add up. So I would say try to take advantage of as many of them as you can.
And we absolutely do, but when you look at, you've got limited staff to to uh, you you know, limited hours in staff. And do you go after the ten thousand dollar or the hundred million dollar one, you know?
So I just, and we have eight minutes left. I'm I'm very time um oriented and sensitive. Um, but I have a constituent who reached out, her name is Catherine, and she lives in the Monite, McKnight neighborhood. Um, is it true that Long Meadow and East Long Meadow buy their water from the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission? That's true. Um, and is it true that their rate is a lot lower than ours? In Springfield?
I I'm not.
Why is that?
I I can speak to that. I I don't know that their rates are lower, but we've had that question um before. And there's a whole number of reasons and I I'll I'll put a couple out there um uh to just give a sense of why. So when you think about Springfield's system, for the Springfield residents is much older than Long Meadows. Springfield was built um first. The the, where the infrastructure lays in the street is much more densely populated with other utilities. So doing work, replacing water mains in a densely populated. Um, utility-rich urban area is a lot different than doing, putting a water main in. Uh, in a suburban street where the streets are wide, there's not a lot of utilities, many of the utilities are over. And so what what ends up happening is the cost for maintenance in an urban area. Versus the cost for maintenance in a suburban area is very different. The other thing too is that. Um, many municipalities, um, they're, the way they bill for water and sewer is different. They may have different accounting principles in how they support their billing. So it may be part of your tax base. It may be the administration of employees in the water. And sewer departments for Long Meadow, that may show up in your in your real estate taxes, but not necessarily on your water bill. Whereas the bill that you get from the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission is everything that it takes. For the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission to provide you, our customer, at the location where you are our customer service. So there's a big difference in how um our wholesale customers deliver their services and how they bill for them. And that and that's not our business. What we do know is that the wholesale rate that they are charged is appropriate. For the usage of water that they get based on how and how much water they use and the cost for us to deliver that water to them. There's a difference in how we deliver the cost in delivering water to a meter at the edge of Long Meadow and East Long Meadow and Agawam. Than there is in the cost to deliver our water to your tap. And and that's, that's essentially the the main points here.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Uh, so I just wanted to say one thing, I guess, ba- based on that. And it is true, and I I know uh Commissioner, um Chairwoman Otero knows this from the Healing Racism Institute. Um, that it's expensive to be poor, right? Um, and what that means basically is because Springfield is an urban city. The streets are tighter because there's more people living here, the poverty rates are higher, we have to pay more for our water. And that doesn't make any sense to me, but it's actually from what uh Catherine, from the McKnight neighborhood said. We actually pay almost a dollar more than Long Meadow does per one hundred cubic foot. Um, and when our residents see that, you know, we pay just as much in property taxes, if not more, probably more because it's expensive to be poor. Um, you know, it's, it just doesn't sound right. And now we're going to be asked probably to pay for a, I'm not sure how many billion dollar new water plant. Um, that's going to last for fifty years, we hope.
Well, we've, we've already come, we've already started paying for it.
Oh, I know, I know. And yeah, so and is Long Meadow paying for it too? Is East Long Meadow paying for it too?
Here's, here's the, it, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm just trying to.
Four minutes, I don't want to go over the two o'clock time.
Okay, real quickly then. The the contracts we sign with East Long Meadow and Long Meadow are five-year contracts and they're based on our operating expenses. They do not pay for expenses in the city of Springfield, but they do pay for the operation of getting water to them. Now, the new water plant will be funded by rates in Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, Springfield, all the water users. That part will be coming from the spread across all users.
Yeah, we'll see. So I just want to thank you all for being here. Um, I look forward to sitting down and talking with you all again. Yes, uh, yes, Counsel Allen.
I just had a thought that, uh, you know, I was thinking a meeting again. And the things that we talked about, I thought that could be part of a next meeting would be a reworked letter or communication of some kind. A review of the rates and a review of the financing for this. You know, that wi- that loan you got, the big loan you got and stuff like that. I think we should talk more about that. Because if I'm not mistaken, it was publicized that there would be, you know, I I'm going to guess at the number. That our our annual rate increases would be around six percent or something. I think that we should meet again and talk about some of those things.
Absolutely. So we'll schedule another meeting. Um, I will let the the staff uh send out that notice. Thank you all.
Thank you, Counsel.
Have a good afternoon.
You do too.
All right, bye.